I will call the September 24th, 2009, eighteen minute Christiansburg Town Council to order. I would like to ask the detective moment of reflection, and we will follow that up immediately with the pledge of allegiance. Stand for the pledge. I'll ask Councilman Sam Bishop to take the pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda? I have one that I would like to add, which is the Fire Department request for a new ladder truck. And I'd like to add it under discussion by Mayor and Council. That'll be item E.
Mayor, I'd like to add an agenda item from the Street Committee. Specifically, it's a plat showing the boundary on vacation relocation between lots one through four at Gateway Plaza and dedication of Broadway. And that's for our current.
That'll be under B. Craig Mountain section, yeah. We have A, which is the...
Actually, you can add it to the Street Committee agenda, right?
That's what I have here.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's fine.
So it'll be B, and I'll get you to remind me what that is.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other additions?
Mayor, I'd like to, when we get to the consent agenda, take B as a separate vote.
Okay. Under public hearings, we have the town of Christiansburg Community Development Block Grant Solidated Plan and Annual Action Plan. And I'm not sure whose that is, but if you'll cut the dimmer switch over the lights.
This will be brief. This is an annual plan that staff prepares for council and for the public to review. It is part of our, the US Department of Housing and Development, Community Development Block Grant allocation that we get. We are slated to receive a little over $107,000 this year. It has been used for infrastructure improvement historically in the Park District, which is one of our very modern income areas in town, and we anticipate that it will be continued to use for infrastructure items within the Park District over the next year.
Do you have the section of the park that you're looking at, or will that be developed later?
As far as, you know, this would be the census block group that is really east of West Main, including Park Drive over to Roanoke Street, forked by Depot and Roanoke Street, Depot and Main Street. So it is, it's within that area. We're potentially looking at a water line improvement.
Okay.
That's been slated.
Very good. Anyone here to, anyone else to address this issue? Hearing number one, I will close the public hearings on the consent agenda. We have a request for council minutes, resolutions authorizing six through 12 October Fire Prevention Week, approval of professional services for engineering contract, resolutions for the Cambria Trail fiscal year 21, '22, VDOT revenue sharing program, resolution in support of Betty Drive Northwest Line, resolution in support of Hickok Street improvements fiscal year 21, '22, resolution in support of North Franklin Sidewalks, Elm Street and Mill Lane, '21, '22, resolution in support of Arbor Drive Northeast, Pupert Ferry Road intersection improvements fiscal year 21, '22, VDOT revenue sharing program, resolution in support of North Franklin Street, Wade's Lane intersection pedestrian improvements fiscal year 21, '22, VDOT transportation alternative program funding application, resolution in support of South Franklin Street, First Street intersection pedestrian improvements fiscal year 21, '22, and is also under VDOT alternative program funding. Approved, Town Council, the second, the Second Amendment and restricted water agreement among the town of Blacksburg, Virginia, town of Christiansburg, Virginia, Virginia politics chief, Montgomery County Public Schools, Montgomery County, Virginia, and NRV Regional Water Authority.
Okay, Marissa, you wanted to separate the...
I did not mention that.
He did. Yes, he did.
We're voting on AC through L.
All right, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, AC, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L.
My second. Good motion, and a second, any discussion?
I want to make a brief comment about, I want to bring to council's attention, and also those who are joining us through the taping of this, there are seven pedestrian and bicycle projects in here that clearly demonstrates this council's commitment to the increased mobility throughout our, throughout our community. I want to lift Ray Nelson, his group up, progressively seeking its revenue sharing funds. But I want, I just want to make that clear to council, this is very, very encouraging and clear commitment to increase mobility, bicycle, pedestrian mobility in our community. Mr. Runfield and Mr. Nelson, I appreciate it. So I think your council appreciates it.
I just sat in on some of that meeting that Mr. Stipes had, and he has some excellent questions, and concerning all these bicycle ways and walkways to make sure that we keep on driving on, and I appreciate that your desire to see these things continue to drive on.
Anyone else? Adam Carter?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six, I think. Bill list. Good motion.
Making most of them pay the bills.
My second. Motion in the second. Any discussions?
Council, I still have a concern over the amount of money being spent outside our area. I've asked a few questions, got a few responses. I just still feel like we could do better, so my vote is going to be of a concern today. So I just want to express that opinion with everyone. Thank you.
Anyone else? Adam Carter?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's five oh, thank you. Introductions and presentations, new introductions of some new employees. Charles Wayne Nelson, Director of Engineering and Special Projects, to introduce Michael Kelly, Assistant Director of Engineering, Land Development and Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Mike Kelly. I have an impressive bio to read. Mike is originally from Ripley, West Virginia, and graduated from West Virginia Institute of Technology with a VS degree in civil engineering in 1998. After graduation, Mr. Kelly went to work for Hayworth, Meyer, and Boylan, a private engineering consulting firm in Charleston, West Virginia, where he worked on highway drainage and utility projects. In June of 2000, Mr. Kelly and his wife relocated to Orlando, Florida, where he worked for lock rain engineering in the highway special projects section, and continued to work on projects related to highway drainage and utility design. In July of 2004, Mr. Kelly left the private consulting industry to pursue a position in the public sector, and went to work for the city of Winter Garden, Florida, as a stormwater engineer. Mr. Kelly was promoted to the position of Assistant City Engineer in August 2005, and promoted to the Assistant Director of Operations in May of 2009. Mr. Kelly decided to leave the city of Winter Garden in September of 2015, and relocated to New Mexico to accept a position with Santa Fe County. While at Santa Fe County, Mr. Kelly held the position of Public Works Director and Deputy Public Works Director. Mr. Kelly is a licensed professional engineer in Florida, West Virginia, and New Mexico. Mr. Kelly has been married to his wife Deanna for 20 years, and together they have a 16-year-old daughter named Erin, and a 14-year-old son named Shane. In their spare time, the Kellys enjoy hiking and visiting national parks. May I present Mr. Mike Kelly.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I'm very grateful to be here, grateful for the opportunity, and look forward to bringing my skills and education to bear for the good citizens of the town of Christiansburg. So I'm honored to be here and very grateful for the opportunity, so thank you very much.
And we're glad to have you, buddy.
Travis Lowes, Public Works Department, to introduce James Ward, Traffic Control Technician Training.
Good evening. I'm here to introduce James Ward. James is our new Traffic Control Technician Training, and he joined our team in August. He came to us from Lake Regional Medical, where he was a machinist for two years. James has lived in the New River Valley, grew up in the New River Valley, and currently lives on Fair Lawn with his wife and $2. In his spare time, he enjoys fishing, being outdoors, and spending time with his family. We are excited to have him on our team and welcome him.
James, anything you want to say in your defense? Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. Max Brown, Public Works Department, to introduce Oki Morris, Maintenance Worker One.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to introduce tonight Oki Morris, Peter Stoneman right here. He started about three weeks ago as a truck driver in the solid waste department. Oki comes to us as a veteran, having served nine years in the United States Army. Oki's hobbies include hunting and fishing. Oki, along with his wife, have three children, the youngest being seven weeks old, so he's probably not getting too much sleep at home at night. But that doesn't show in his, in his work ethic. Oki has proven to be a valuable asset to the solid waste department during his short tenure, and we're very glad to have him.
Oki, is that you want to add to that?
No, I'm serious. Thank you, guys.
Crystal Jones, Aquatic Operations Supervisor, to introduce Eric Johnson, lifeguard crew leader.
Good evening, Mayor Barber and Town Council. I would like to introduce the Aquatic Center's new lifeguard crew leader, Eric Johnson. Eric comes to us from the Armfield Civic Center in Pilot Mountain, North Carolina, and Surrey County, North Carolina EMS, bringing with him 18 years' experience working in the aquatic field and three years as an active EMT. Eric's training and experience is quite broad within the field of first responder. He is a graduate of basic law enforcement training. He is both lifeguard and lifeguard instructor certified, and holds the EMT basic certification. Eric also has spent quite a bit of time teaching school lessons and holds a PADI SCUBA certification. Eric is passionate about water and water safety, is immersing himself in his role at the CAC, and is a great asset to our team. Eric comes.
Eric?
You got anything to say? She said it all, didn't she?
Welcome aboard, thank you. This is our citizens' comment portion of the meeting. If there's anyone here that would like to address council on any matter, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and limit three minutes. Is there anyone here to address council? Seeing no one, I close the citizens' comments under committee reports. Mr. Stipes, Mr. Collins, Street Committee report recommendations on...
We have two. One that's on the agenda, and one that we added to the agenda. The first one, we'll go on this quickly, is on the agenda. It's a subdivision plat Craig Mountain, Section 13. Some of you may be familiar with where this is, Robinson Estates. It's the end of Flint Drive, which is presently, it's presently not even a cul-de-sac, it's just the street ends, correct? So years ago, when the subdivision was developed, it just, Flint Drive was stopped. But now, you can go ahead and show the arrow to where it is right, okay? You can move your arrow around so people can see it, so. Yeah, the street is shown there, is not there today. What's there? Put your arrow where Flint Drive ends right now. That's where Flint Drive ends right now. So the lots that are there have been there for a long time, it's just never, the cul-de-sac was never completed, and that's what you're seeing there is a cul-de-sac with, is it eight building lots? Eight building lots, and a stormwater management facility you see on the left. And it's a nice completion of that street, and it meets our subdivision ordinance, and the Street Committee has reviewed it and recommends council's approval of the plat as presented, and I'll make that recommendation in form of a motion.
I'll second that motion.
And if there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, but we think it's a nice completion of that street.
Any other, any discussions? That motion in the second. Mr. Collins, you abstain?
I abstain, yes.
Okay. Adam Carter?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Abstain.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
The second agenda, the second item that we added to the agenda is the Gateway Plaza. And for those of you not familiar with the food line, it's on Roanoke Street with a food line and a tractor supply and so forth is. There's some reconfiguration of lots going on, and the main, the main event is our subdivision, or our traffic signal and safety improvements right there, where the arrow is right there. That, that project is currently under construction, and if you move the arrow up, part of that, that section of, that leg of the approach is what we say in engineering terms, that leg of the approach is going to be dedicated to the town. It's considered part of the intersection, and so that dedication is coming to the town. And then you see lots one, two, and three are reconfigurations. There are four lots there today, there's going to be four lots with this dedication that is sort of reconfiguring it, including a dedication of property to the town for the, for the traffic signal. So we spent some time going over this so we could understand it, and we won't belabor the point. Basically, it's four lots today, and there are four lots with this reconfiguration, but it's being reconfigured to tidy up the lot configurations, especially with respect to the new intersection. So it meets, you know, meets the town's needs, Engineering Department has recommended approval, and it meets our subdivision ordinance, so I'll therefore make a recommendation that council approve the plat as presented, and that recommendation is also a motion.
My second. Motion in the second, discussion. Was that with possible administrative...
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes. There, there may be some cosmetic labeling changes to make, and so I would revise the recommendation to, in motion to be, a motion to approve the plat as presented with minor administrative slash cosmetic changes as deemed appropriate by Mr. Nelson, or the zoning administrator would be Mr. Warren. Okay, so that's my new motion.
Hold on, do one second.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can we go, the light, is the light on, John? The one on North Franklin? Okay. This is right up nearby, Walk Line.
No. They're on the other end of town, so they've got to come out toward.
Tractor's fine. Okay, I'm with you now.
There's fallen branch red on the, on the lower side of the intersection, you see that there?
Okay.
That's where the, that's the project that's on the way right now.
All right. So we have a motion and an amended second. Any further discussion, I'm sorry.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Abstain.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is five oh one abstention. Under discussion by Mayor and Council, conditional use permit request by NRV Marketplace LLC for a planned commercial development, comprehensive sign plan, and farmers' market for property located 2501 to 2785 Market Street, Northeast Tax Map Number 436-5-1, in the B3 General Business District. Property is designated as business commercial in the future land use map. The 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing was held on September the 10th.
I'll make some comments during the discussion, but I'll go ahead and put a motion on the table that we approve the request as presented with the amended, with the amendments that were provided on September 16. My iPad is died, so I can't look at it, but I reviewed it carefully earlier this week. And so, okay, you can pull it up right there, yeah. iPad's dead. But I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the proposal with the amendments that were provided, and basically the changes to the sign.
My second. Motion in the second.
Is everybody clear on that, or should we sort of verbalize this again?
We'll get out for discussion.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we can discuss it, but I want to get a motion out there.
So I believe...
The revisions would take the sign height down from 70 feet to, I believe, 54? 54. 54 feet. That's accomplished by basically taking a total of eight feet off the sign and relocating it to a higher location on the property to get to the 54 feet total sign. The additional request is to increase the sign area to 325 square feet total.
And what is it right now?
Right now, it's at 200.
So we're always doubling it.
From 200 to 325, so.
Aye.
About 150 percent. 160 percent.
And we're increasing the height of the sign, is that correct?
It's correct. The ordinance allows up to 35-foot sign by lot. The basically planned development provision, signage, additional use permit process allows you to basically request any, any signage that the developer may ask for. It's at council's discretion whether to approve that or not. I know you didn't feel comfortable with the 70-foot sign, and I think that's part of the reason the planning commission recommendation was against the inclusion of the 70-foot sign. The developers proposed the 54-foot sign with the increased sign, I think is kind of a little bit of a compromise in that regard. Whether you think it's acceptable or not is council's decision. But the provision is included, and this is a fairly new provision in the zoning ordinance because of the change from including, having a standalone sign ordinance to including it in the zoning ordinance. We included basically provision for this planned signage package that council can approve.
It just go back to the planning commission?
It did, and they did take a formal recommendation, although I think the comments they received were hostile.
I read the, I'll answer that, Mr. Bishop, the, yeah, I read that carefully. The planning commission reconsidered that, and some of the planning commission, I think was generally well-received. I accept the planning commission's recommendation for denying the request as it was presented. So I, I think they did their, a good job, and I, and I wasn't going to support it with the taller sign, but the planning commission did look at this. I think the developer, the applicant was responsive, and some other mitigating circumstances, in my, in my opinion, part of my thinking was, once we reach a 12-acre threshold, there is opportunity for conditional use permit, and the different sign, you know, sign considerations directly across the street from this project is the New River Valley Mall, and that is a large-scale development that has a 54-foot sign. I think it's 54, it might even be 650.
I believe it's a 35-foot sign, but it's actually the same elevation because of the grade change.
Right. But we're, so the applicant has revised the request to be a similar height sign as, as is being used across the street, and that's why, that's why I'm comfortable to support. Not only planning commission recommendation for denial of the request the way it was, but also to grant the request based on the revised, revised, what do you call it, proposal? Okay.
Where is the new location for the sign? It said it was moving a little bit.
It would relocate from, like, it's more or less the entrance area now to the north, approximately right, rightward center there, where the area is now.
So that's actually higher than...
So it was proposed in the same year? It's not shifted in traffic? I'm walking here. That's the proposed location we received.
So the elevation is much higher?
It's a 70-foot decline. They took eight feet off the sign, so it should be, basically changed from 62 to 54. It should be a six, or sorry, eight-foot, eight-foot increase.
Say, say that again.
Basically, they took eight feet off the height. The difference in the 16-feet height, eight feet off it's because of height decrease on the sign, and eight feet off it is because of gain and elevation, moving the sign to a higher location on the property.
It's same previous...
The previous sign came down eight feet in height, and they relocated it, well, actually came down 16 feet in height, and they relocated it to a location eight feet higher on the property.
So the measured height of the proposed sign?
54 feet.
It's 54 feet. And the measured height of the mall sign is what?
Well, the measured height of this mall sign at the intersection is 35 feet, although it would be at the same elevation, the top of the mall sign would be at the same elevation as the top of this sign.
So I'll ask the question differently. Is the sign request that's being proposed, which I understood to be the same height of sign at the New River Valley Mall, is it, or is it not the same height as the sign of the mall?
It's not the same height, although it would be the same elevation because of the grade, grade...
So not treated any higher than...
It would, it would not be any higher than the mall sign in elevation.
I think that was one of the questions I asked last meeting. I used the word pitch, but I think that was the same thing, elevation.
I was just looking at the elevation views and I noticed the sign was a lot, you know, much higher. I mean, I hate the delay, but I'd like to think about this some more, myself. I'm not, I'm not sure that I understand. My just, my personal justification for doing this is, is that it's similar to the mall that's right across the street. It's a large-scale development, and there's already precedent for that right across the street, and that's why I'd be comfortable with a similar height of sign, not a 70-foot sign.
I'd like to ask a question about the width there. It's increased quite a bit. How, does anybody in council feel a little bit, do, do we need to have the increased width that we're talking about there? Does anybody, can anybody like me on, on that?
Got a hand up there?
Well, I'm not on council with it, but, well, technically I am, technically I'm not. I don't have a problem with increasing the square footage. With what the number of businesses that are going in there, I think would be, considered to be more than what's in the main mall. So I, I think that's fine. I also don't oppose a 54-foot sign, but I'm not in that mix yet.
Mayor, I know that the last meeting, Mr. Simones had his chance to say words, but I see, here tonight, could he maybe ask, answer the question I just asked?
Are you requesting, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Simones?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So just a couple of items. Let me talk about the square footage first. So the way the sign ordinance reads and the amount of square footage we're allowed for a property of this size with this amount of road frontage equaled up to be about 1,400 square feet of signage. So based on that, and the number of signs we could get, I believe we could have had seven signs around the perimeter of this property. So what we did, when we went back after councils, after the public hearing, we went back and looked at, how can we maximize the signage, square footage, but minimize the number of signs that you would see along the threshold and the perimeter of the property itself? So what we've got proposed now are the two monument signs that we had shown originally, which are 75, max 75 square foot, which is the town code, the two pylon signs, the larger signs... The two pylon signs, the larger signs we have, we have one that's a 35-foot height maximum that would be the one on Pepper's Ferry, and that had, I think, a 300 square foot maximum. And our one on Franklin was 325. So when we added all the square footages up together, that got us to where we were allowed by right from a total square footage standpoint, but what we're committing to is not putting any more than these four signs along that to not further jump up. You know, your streets gave and your view sheds into the property, so we looked at that as a compromise, and we're reducing the amount of overall signage sticking on the property and maximizing that square footage we'd be allowed to do by right. For the height of the sign itself, when we have, after we met with town council and had our public hearing, the concern about a 70-foot height, again, the location of the sign originally was down at the entrance road, and that's the lowest elevation we're sighted. If you remember, the reasoning for that, for the request for that taller sign was to have visibility from coming, I guess, southbound, past Super Shoes, coming towards our new intersections going in with this project. As we went back to try to look at how we could reduce the signage down something a little bit more palatable for council and planning commission, we hit that same elevation that Randy was speaking to, that same general above sea level elevation of what the New River Valley Mall sign was. And we did that by setting the sign up a little bit higher up on the hill, where you'd have the Verizon store, which is right there where you see number four. So it'd be sitting in front of that, still within the allowable area for a sign, but sitting it right there, reducing the sign down to 54 feet, and that gets us the better, the better visibility from northbound to southbound Franklin that our clients were really looking for. So that was the reasoning and the reasoning behind the changes. Does that clear that, Mr. Hubbard?
Well, no. I'm really talking about the width of these signs is what's on my mind, and I'm just worrying that the, this sign here, would the increased width will be out of proportion to anything else that's around there. And I mean, I realize that's what you'd like to have, but I think we would also like to have things all in somewhat conformity, if you know what I mean.
Mm-hmm.
And so is what I was thinking, how would you people think about just keeping the width of the sign the way it is right now?
Well, I think, Mr., I'll go ahead, because along the same lines, what I heard Mr. Simones say is that with the amount of square footage that you have, you have a total allowable permitted square footage of 1,400, is that what you said?
No, sorry, we had 1,400 linear feet of road frontage, which gets us 700 square feet of signage, I believe is what it was.
If 1,400 feet of street frontage, you're allowed one sign for every 200 feet of street frontage. So they could, in fact, by right, have ground pre-standing signs, southern ground pre-standing signs of 200 square feet each potentially. So they could have, they could have a combined total signage area, ground pre-standing, of 1,400 square foot area, which would just, would have to be split amongst southern signs.
I got it. And your proposal now is, what's the total square footage of actual signage?
This thing's a matter. It's just under what we'd be allowed to by code. We're just doing it on four signs instead of seven.
You can limit the number of signs total, and I think they're fine with that as a condition of the conditional use permit, that it be limited to no more than the four ground pre-standing signs that they've proposed.
Any other signage that we would have within the property would be backed within the center core of the property itself if we had building signage or any other monument signs there, but the perimeter of the property would be limited to the four signs we have proposed.
I don't have a concern with that. I'm just going to, my personal reservation is to make sure that we're not having the same grid.
All right. Randy, can I ask you a question? I'm not sure if everybody's following. I mean, if we increase the width of this side, it's not going to be out of kilter with everything else. I mean...
Well, it would be a larger sign than what we have in the area now, although the reason behind the allowance for the conditional use permit, as Brad mentioned, it's only, you're only eligible if you have a property of 12 acres or more, so it's got to be a larger commercial property to be eligible for the consideration. So in that regard, I think you could say that, yes, it would be a special approval, but it would be a special approval, again, for large pieces of property that may be a larger signage or maybe a higher height that's more appropriate for it.
And if I could chime in here too, which is kind of like the other side of a business perspective, is if you do pay the rent, then I'm sure that they're going to be asking, each business is going to want to have their signage on the street and be seen. I mean, that's just part of the deal of what's expected.
Which Mr. Hubbard pointed out last night.
Right, right.
That's a good point.
You know, so rather than having them spread out all over, there's just one bigger sign, which is more clean and concise, in just my opinion.
Oh, it's like...
It's, yeah. So I feel like they've done a very good job in trying to be considerable to our feelings and make some changes and concessions. So I personally think that they've done a good job in coming back with what they've presented, because I would say that Verizon probably isn't too thrilled to have a sign out, right outside their building. They would have preferred to have it in the median, you know, so they're having some concessions as well.
And Steve, the width of that sign only went out from about 10 feet to 13 feet, so it's only about a three-foot increase in width, so very minimal point of view from the street.
Further from Mr. Hubbard's mind, these, these are not going to be Las Vegas-style flashing digital signs, is that right?
They were going to be. We had that planned initially, but we've scaled that back after Mr. Hubbard's...
You're killing me.
Las Vegas-style signs on this one.
We know as old people, we just stay away, you know?
Randy, I've got a quick question that you guys will know. How large is the Hobby Lobby shopping plaza? How many acres is that? You know that? Is it less than 12? I don't want you to know specifically, is it less than 12 or over 12?
It's over 12.
Okay. How about the Lowe's? Is that under or over?
This is probably close.
Okay. How about the Haberstadt property?
Haberstadt's definitely...
Large or over?
I would say it's 26 acres.
I may be prepared to vote on it. We already have a motion in a second, so I guess we are voting. I want to, and I'll go ahead and put Mr. Winkles on the spot here. When we talked about this before, we talked about the initial one for the 70-foot sign. We talked about that, you know, we talked about the mall sign being 62 feet.
Correct.
So help me understand...
That's, that's the, well, the elevation, the mall sign is 35 feet. The elevation of the prior sign at 62 feet would have been the same elevation as the mall sign.
Not the same height, the same elevation.
Correct. This sign would be the same elevation as the mall sign because of the eight-foot decrease in the sign, well, certainly 16-foot decrease in the sign, although that, eight came off the top of the sign, eight was gained by relocating.
But that's not what we asked, though, you know, at that point.
Any further discussion?
I mean, just to beat the dead horse, you know, I just am afraid when this goes up that I'll say, who voted to approve this, you know? I hope that it's going to stay, you know, it's all going to be a respectable size, and as I brought out the last meeting, you know, this place is going to be a quality place to start with and you don't need to have, you know, over signage, and I'm just going to put it that.
Any further discussions? Madam Corrigan?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
So that is 42. The passes with the adjustments to the sign elevation, everything else involved, is that correct? Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ordinance to rezone 125.652 acres, Condon Nana's Metta's Golf Course and Shepherd Property located on parcel numbers 016377, 016381, 016378, 230266, 230267, 230268, from A Agriculture to R2, two-family residential with proffers. The property is located western boundary of the town of Christiansburg, adjacent to Christiansville Road, Meadow Drive, Potter Drive, and north, north and southern right of way. Public hearing was held on September the 10th.
Can I make a statement here?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm also on the planning commission, and it's been said, well, the planning commission, when we heard this, I'm the one that made the, the, mm, mm, motion and the vote on it. And it's been said that that was a conflict of interest, and I was talking to the town about this, and the town did not think it a conflict of interest, but to be sure and to be on the safe side, I'm going to abstain from this. And, and just like I've told my kids all their lives, there's never a right way to do the wrong thing, and I'm going to be, try to do the right thing and abstain from this in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Do I have a motion or to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning as requested for Metta's Golf Course.
I'll second.
A motion in second. Any discussion?
I would like to say something. I originally had a concern about traffic with this going in and out, but after I looked at it and talked to a few people, I really don't feel like it's going to be a major disruption to traffic, because there is more than one way in and out. So I just wanted to state that, because I've had some concern and some people talk to me about this and about the traffic.
I would agree. There's more access points down there. I also got a question. I'd heard that the houses that are proposed to be built there are 400 to 500. Am I over that?
A 400 to 500 range?
Single-family?
Yes.
Were offered to how many? 51 houses or 21 houses?
51.
I like 21 better, Tom, but that's...
Sorry, I mean, Tom, if you're chiming in, is that, did I hear correctly, it'll be the 400 to 500 range or?
Yeah, the actual one that we've titled the building permit for was closer to 600 pounds.
Okay.
We use the compact development option up on top of the hill in the center of the project, those will be a little bit less, you know, they could be in the 3 to 4, but then you've got to stake lots all the way around.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this, because I do think that meets with, there could have been a lot of different things that went out there, and we all know it, more high density, and I appreciate this developer, he goes the extra mile, and I think it'll fit well within the, where the old Meadows Golf Course is, so I will support this.
I'd like to ask a question, actually conferred with a planning commission member that I know that had voted against this before the additional proffers came in, but my understanding is, is that they are limiting themselves to 51 lots, period, as part of this rezoning, is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay. And that was his, that was his, or that was, this particular planning commission's reservation was that it was going to increase, but they've limited themselves to that, and I am going to support it. And so that 51, 51 blocks, this is all it's ever going to be out?
Single-family.
Single-family, duplexes, no apartments.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. So thank you for that.
I'm on the traffic, I'm fine with that, but several people have talked to me, and I know I mentioned this in the last meeting too, I'm just worried about the road itself. I mean, it's not that great coming in with it and bring all the stuff to build the houses, construction work, and I'm just worried that the, you know, the road itself is, needs to be upgraded a little bit, and I don't think that's in your plans, is that correct?
That is correct. The traffic warrants aren't there. The increase, the amount of traffic that's generated from residential subdivision, I think it's also included staff doing an analysis of the projected traffic, and it's actually less than what was there on typical golf.
I mean, my question really was, when you start construction work and all that, if these roads are up to the pounding that they're going to take, and when they're finished, you know, what the roads are going to look like? That's my question.
Hopefully the same as they do today, Councilman.
Are we ready for a vote? Madam Corrigan?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Stipes.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 501, extension. Ordinance to rezone 360 acres, portion of property tax map number 530-18-1-7, from A Agriculture to R3 multi-family residential. Property is located at 2175 to 2235 Giles Drive in the Reagan Point subdivision. Public hearing was held September the 10th, 2019. The Reagan Point subdivision is down off of Glade Road, is that down in that, along the interstate?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll have a motion.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
What's the motion for?
To approve.
Okay, let's have a motion and a second and discussion. Madam Corrigan?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's exciting. Thank you very much. Got an update on the home state program registration. Randy, is that you? Is it Andrew? Is it? I'm looking forward to this.
As council will recall, I guess it's been about a month or so, we had provided a little bit of information, but there was a desire for some additional information on registration for home states, so we wanted to come back and provide some additional information tonight, and would like to see if there's any additional information from this day forward, you know, that we can provide to council as well. So as, as council may remember, there's really three tiers to our review process. We have a really brief planning application that has been, the way that it's really worked is people are emailing those in more than not, and so they're not really coming into the office at that point, and then, and then those are approved, and that's a fairly quick process. And then the building department is scheduling an inspection where they're going out to the applicant and doing their inspection, and then at that point, the individual will come in and pull their business license. And so, and it's, it's going at a pretty smooth pace now, so we do have 30 applications that have been received for our planning applications that have been approved, 27 building inspections have been approved, and then 25 business license have been issued. So really, those five, the difference between the 30 applications received and the business license issued, you know, it's just a matter of time before, before those numbers, you know, before those numbers catch up with one another.
What's our business license fee for that? It's very low, isn't it?
Thirty bucks.
Thirty dollars.
And we don't charge for an inspection, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, with the inspection, that was one thing that we did only at the onset, charge for inspections, but then after we had conducted a number of them, the building department was finding that it just really, they were spending about 10 to 15 minutes out on the inspection, so then that's when we came back to council and asked, you know, if that would be okay if we don't charge for those inspections.
And you refunded those, right? Did we refund those inspections? I thought we did. That's awesome.
So as far as looking into making sure that we are creating that even playing field and making sure that all neighborhoods are being treated equally and that the sanctity of honor is being upheld across our community, we went out, we're reviewing Airbnb website to identify those properties that are within the town. There are a lot of properties that you pull up when you pull up the website. A lot of them are in the county or even in neighboring communities. We did identify, the 21 that we identified, the properties within the town that were on Airbnb from the searches that we did, seven properties had not applied, so we are contacting, pursuing registration of those individual, those individuals that we were able to identify. that we were able to identify. And we'll continue to do, uh, searches as well as, as staff time permits.
Can I ask, can I ask a question there? So are you saying that the best you can tell?
Yeah.
There are approximately 37 properties in town that are being used for Airbnb. Is that what you're saying? Cause we have 30 that have applied.
Right.
And there, and you said there are seven that are not.
Well, with Airbnb, and Will may be able to, to comment on this a little bit more.
You know, to, to some extent, that, that kind of represent, represents a snapshot in time. So that was the listings that we identified when we pulled that search about a month ago and started this process.
Okay.
If we were to do that again before a big football game, we can, we might see new properties that didn't come up that time. So this will be kind of an ongoing thing.
Okay.
And I would assume that we would find new properties.
So properties can appear and disappear on there.
Correct.
For availability.
Correct.
Interesting, okay. I, I don't understand that. Or, that's helpful.
So we'll continue to monitor Airbnb as well as other sites like BRBO. And then, um, another tool, uh, that we're able to use is, uh, comparing personal property tax bills from, uh, this fiscal year to last fiscal year, checking for changes, uh, seeing if, uh, it is a business or if it is a home stay, if they have a business license, uh, and, uh, in a, a home occupation, uh, then, uh, then it probably wouldn't be a home stay. Uh, but, so there, that, that is another tool that we're using, uh, to verify, uh, that, that people are registering. And, uh, and so, uh, with those that were identified by the finance department, uh, they have been sent, uh, letters, uh, to, to follow up on that. We are continuing to contact and pursue registration. Our, uh, uh, finance department has sent emails through the host site, uh, through the Airbnb site, and we are following up on, with letters as we find those. Uh, so we do think we've, we've made, uh, decent progress, but we will continue to monitor and we'll, uh, we'll, uh, look to come back to you, uh, at the first meeting in December with any additional updates that we may have.
I tell you, Andrew, to me, this is, uh, this is about as tricky as a, a situation as that we have that comes by us, and I think you've really handled it well. And it makes me feel good that somebody who does what they're doing is doing it, and I appreciate it.
Well, Val and Stacy Harrison and the finance department and Will and, uh, and Jared and Jude and planning department, I think, uh, have really hit the ground and done a lot of great work. And then just, you know, doing our best to, to, to monitor the situation as, as, as best we can.
Well, thank you to you all.
Do, do we have any, any, any initial income figures?
They're gonna be just starting to come in.
Okay.
Cause the first ones would have been due August 20th. So I could go back and look at those. It's not gonna be a month.
Those numbers ultimately are not gonna be big numbers.
Yes.
And just for myself, I'm not interested in the revenue of that at all. I'm interested in the.
Level of playing field?
Yeah, that's what I'm interested in. We should make it, and I think we have made entry into Conformance very easy and very reasonable, cost reasonable. And this is one area that I would like to see us be very aggressive in for Conformance to make sure that everyone's being, you know, everyone's being treated as fairly as possible. And the revenue is gonna be, it is really, uh, I mean, it's not.
Small round.
We could theoretically.
Relatively small. Now, they're gonna, yeah, the person that's paying it is not gonna say that, but I'm saying, and I understand that. But my, my personal interest in this is not deriving revenue for the town, is creating a level of playing field.
I think we should probably can still, we may stand to make more money off, off of fines and penalties for those that aren't lost instead of getting off the actual income. It's what a thousand dollars.
I think we should be aggressive and enforcing that.
Do we, do we plan on, for instance, uh, right before a home football game weekend, to take a look at it? I know, timing is not all that great when you have to get through each one of those, but certainly can, yes.
It's probably not the Friday before. It's probably two or three weeks before a home game. Cause that's when most people are trying to book those rooms. It's 14 days or longer out, not the week before or the day before. Oh, I'm sure some spring up.
We can look at games and we can look at, uh, you know, uh, winter convocation as well as spring, you know, spring graduation ceremonies and, and other, you know.
Orientation, parents return.
I do have a question. Last meeting, I know we were gonna reach out to the county and try to get support and I know you're laughing. It's really, it's really disappointing, but my understanding is that they're not willing to work with us. I mean, is, is that the final bottom line answer from the county?
We, we haven't received the information at this point. I got, Randy may have some additional information.
But they weren't willing to share Commissioner revenue's office.
That was the reason that we did the 2018 to 2019 because the information that they would have gathered, um, that we would like them to have shared was having located any home stays within the town that they then applied a personal property tax to. So by taking last year's personal property tax list and then this year's when we bought it, comparing the two and finding the new ones, that hopefully is going to identify the information that they were unwilling to share. They just.
Gotcha.
But isn't there a reason why they can't share that? I think, uh, it was more that's not.
They signed the privacy of information section in code of Virginia that's specific to Commissioner revenue.
But isn't that optional?
Is it?
Uh, uh, that's our interpretation, correct.
Exactly. So, I mean, I'm going on the record as being very disappointed that the county isn't willing to work with us more. We should be working together and not apart. So, and I realize that we can only do so much about it and I don't wanna hold one thing. You give me this, I give you that. I just think it's wrong, so.
Well, I don't think it's the county so much as a constitutional office of the county. And that's what I'm hearing. So.
But they can release it.
I feel the same way. I don't understand that, but it's, I, I don't think this is the county per se. It is. But for what, the office of a constitutional officer of the county, which.
Which is under.
County board, well, yeah, but they're not under the direction of the, of the board supervisors. Is that correct?
Correct.
The county has nothing to worry about constitutional officers. There you go.
So it's one person making the decision and that's it? And who, can you name who is that one person?
Commissioner revenue.
It's Helen Roy.
And when is election time?
Jim, I would anticipate he has some sort of legal counsel advisor on this, wouldn't you assume?
Yeah, I know, I've seen listings on it, listserv for commissioners revenue, the treasuries, I don't have them, I guess separate organization and someone who, um, advise.
It's pretty consistent with commissioners revenue across the state, from what I can understand.
Yeah, they don't. I, I think, could they, obviously, yes, have they determined that perhaps it's not with advisement apparently?
No, I agree with you, your frustration. It seemed like, you know, we work better together in tandem with one another to.
Correct.
And I'm sure there's some things they want, um, they want information on too, but we could also probably cite something about personal information, about sharing with them. I know Ms. Roy personally, and I would hope this isn't just based on, there's, there's no real will towards the town, I'm sure. But, um, hopefully, I'm not wrong about that. But, uh, hopefully she's consulted some legal guidance and that's why it ends up like this. But if we wanna know more, we can just go ask her, right?
I will.
I know you will.
No doubt. I'm not gonna drop between your office and.
Let's walk across the street.
Between nine and nine thirty in the morning.
But she's very willing to sit with anybody and talk with them. But Val, those seven, uh, that we identified, how long's it been since we've heard anything?
Some of them we heard from right away. Some of them were already in process.
Okay.
Some of them are getting.
Some of them, we just finished the on-the-ground investigation and identified their address this week or the end of last week, so.
And I know there were at least two that have, they, they qualify as long-term rental after we did the investigation. One was gonna be convert to, to view, uh, to more of a, of more than 30 days per rental period, which would then give them to, whether, you know, if I was gonna rent out a room in my house, it would be that type of contractual agreement as opposed to, uh, as a, a transit, a, a transient situation, uh, to someone in, uh, Airbnb or home stay situation.
Good, thank you.
Are we done? Good discussion of proposed mural at the Christiansburg Library in Montgomery County's policy, replacement of town-sponsored murals on county-owned property. I believe, Randy, you got this?
Yes. Just a little background, uh, of course, uh, we had voted to participate in the mural with the library foundation. Uh, we pay 2,500 each to, uh, prepare the mural. Uh, the artist is Katie Shepherd, and basically, you know, we need a permission from the county since it's county property. The board of supervisors at their September 9th meeting adopted a policy for use of, or for painting murals on town, on county property. Prior to adopting a resolution supporting, allowing us to do the mural in compliance with that policy. Uh, the policy has a few hoops to jump, to jump through. I don't mind performing them. I guess probably the biggest things I'll point out is, it, they do require commitment from the town to remove the mural if county decides that they want it gone. And I think they require basically within a 30-day notice that we would remove the mural. Uh, I'm not opposed to doing that, I just wanna make sure council's acceptable to that before I proceed with it.
Is that, is that the only hoop?
Well, there's some other hoops. I, I do need to talk to adjoining property owners. I have to give them, they've already got a, a drawing of the mural, things like that, color schemes. So there's a little bit of paperwork I have to give them, and I have to give them an agreement, basically just stating that the town would remove the mural if, if requested.
So how hard would it be to remove that once we put it up? That's gonna.
It, it's on brick. Uh, I would plan on doing it by either pressure washing it or sandblasting it. Uh, pressure washing it might not get it, sandblasting it definitely would get it.
So would that not then deface their building?
Yeah. Well, it's brick. Um, you know, it would, it would take a little of the brick finish off.
So they could, they could complain about that.
I've got a few things to throw in there, just if you're finished, Randy.
Yeah.
Okay, I read that full contract and I understand where they're coming from. It's their building, they want it protected, but they want us to have, completely maintain it. Us, not the library. Um, return it to its original condition. And having put up signs myself and taken them down, anything can happen. So I have a big concern with putting 100% of the liability on us. It's not our building. I love the idea of murals, but after I read what the county has proposed, it is 100% our responsibility. And I think that's putting too much on us. We're already the ones putting in half the money, you know, and I'm all for a mural. I, I think the position was great, the colors were great, the idea behind it is great, but as soon as we start to request support, it wasn't a, a complete vote. Mr. King did not vote for it. So for, for me to feel like that I want to support this idea, I would like the support of the whole county, and we didn't get it. And I do have a major concern about the maintenance and returning it to its original condition. If you sandblast or if you pressure wash, you run a huge risk of damaging the building cause brick can be damaged. And then all the repair to get it back to what they think is original would be on us. And I think that's far too much of an obligation on the town of Christiansburg. And it's, it's unfortunate because I love the idea.
Well, the county has seen what the murals gonna look like, is that correct?
Correct.
And they have said that they like what they see.
Cause I understand it, correct?
All on Mr. King, okay? So.
What was the reason, 100?
Why is it that we're gonna have to maybe tear it down?
Not tear it down.
Well, not tear it down.
At county discretion, if they were to ask us to, basically per the agreement, we would have to.
So we'd be into it far more than the initial $2,500 investment.
I would say sandblast it'll take, it'll cost more than that.
That's right.
It's, it's very expensive.
Well, why don't we find somewhere else to put it?
That's what I'm saying.
It's our building. We can control what we want.
I mean, this was a group idea, um, between Casey and the library, which I thought was a fabulous idea, Casey, by the way.
It's a great idea.
It's a great idea. But I, uh, when we start to just get into the details of it, so many red flags start to pop up. I'm, I'm just concerned about it.
Well, I would think that if, if the museum wants this and everyone would pay half the money to put it up, then we should try and negotiate with the museum. If it has to come down, they pay half the cost to take it down or cover it or whatever.
But does that go with the county's?
I mean, I would think that's.
I'm, I'm all for, I'd say we just, we find another, either another, uh, third party private, um, business owner who.
Exactly.
Cause it's a great mural. It really, I thought it looked great. We can always just reach out to someone else to see if they're interested in it.
Not many around that size, but you're, you're exactly right. Now.
I do know Mr. Long across the street, I mean, they're doing what they can to fix up their building and, uh, they, they haven't agreed to it. I just, and this is me personally, I'm not speaking for anybody on council. They, I did reach out to them about possibly getting a mural there one day and they were very interested in that. Now, of course, there's a lot of details, it takes council approving it, but that would be an ideal place when we walk out of our town hall or somebody goes down Main Street, that is a very visible place for it.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping they can fix up their building and work with us to maybe get one in there. That'd be ideal for it.
Is it worth the effort for Randy to reach out to the county again with our concerns?
I, I would, I would rather.
I would.
Yeah, you would say none of you.
No, because they recently adopted this policy. So they've sat there and talked and talked and talked about it, kind of just like we would. And they've developed this. And I think they've developed it knowing that we have this request coming up. So, I don't know, I, I feel like if the county wants to come to us and talk about this one set project and how we can work it out, that's one thing. But if they have a code in place, they're gonna enforce it, especially since it's new.
Right.
And that puts all the liability on us. I'm not a fan of that.
I agree with that, cause once again, we paying 2,500, excuse me, $2,500 to maybe use that somewhere else to improve or enhance our properties. Now, I like the mirror idea, but when I read this agreement they've won, it's kinda like holding us to the fire.
I mean, I just, I'm, I'm agree with.
And that's enough for me. We have the Central Business District Committee, uh, who actually came up with the idea and proposed it, right? This came from Central Business.
It came from Casey.
Or Casey.
Casey was part of us. Oh, yes.
But there are two members on there, so.
Don't quit, don't quit trying new things like that.
Yeah, definitely.
It's like a tough crowd to deal with.
So we have a, we have a liaison meeting in the morning. Is it worth our mentioning this to, to Craig and Todd King that, you know, at this point we're gonna pull out of it unless they have.
No, we, we.
We are gonna pull out of it.
So we all are gonna pull out of it.
Comes down.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we're gonna pull out of it based on.
Well, why, why don't we let Randy talk to him and we can, we can finish this up at our next meeting and maybe even invite somebody from, from the county to come here to be on the agenda for the next meeting.
It's not, I don't think that's a meeting for a formal agenda that we have to sit around and bicker with the board of supervisors. One supervisor who's, is he gonna speak for all the supervisors? No. I, I, if they wanna come back to us, they can.
With a different.
No, if they want to come back to us, they can. Mr. Winfield has other things he can be doing for the town of Christiansburg.
Sounds good, so the general consensus is we're going back after. And we will tell them, we'll relay that to Mr. Meadows and Mr. Kim. Very good.
We'll take a vote, so they'll know how many we want to.
Did we vote last time?
We did vote to fund the mural.
And that's a shame, we both funded, but then we have to...
Still have that, but we put it somewhere else.
Right.
Is the vote depending on that?
Decide this contingent on that building.
Right.
But we didn't have this information before us, correct?
Right, exactly.
Do we have a motion to withdraw?
I need a motion, we withdraw.
Got a motion in a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? Here, Nudman and Hook.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop. Councilman Collins. Councilman Hubbard. Councilwoman Sachs. Aye. Councilman Joe Walter. Councilman Stipes.
So it's five and one, am I correct? This next item for discussion may be a little preliminary, a discussion of Christiansburg Farmer's Market location. To understand that the work that we thought was going to happen next summer is probably delayed at least until twenty-one or twenty-two.
Until at least October, until at least October of 2020, so it will be past the next farmer's market season.
So a whole year from now. So what's the relocation for, is that...
Well, if it were going to happen in the middle of the summer of 2020, we were going to have to make a decision, either want to relocate the farmer's market for the entire period, or find a place and relocate it halfway through.
No, we don't, right?
No, we don't, at this point.
I would like to say something if I can, but I can't, but I will.
You said it, didn't you?
I attended most of the farmer's market events downtown, good days, bad days, and I kind of spoken to most of the vendors down there to see what can we, as a town, do to improve or get people downtown. And the biggest thing I hear from them is location, location. They're really not satisfied with where we're at, they're, they can keep showing up, but once again, they would think that if we move somewhere else where it's more visible, we can get more people in. And of course, one of the locations that came up was direction parking lot. But like I said, I attended this about every day down there for the last five years, so I do listen to the vendors, I even talk to the customers, I wait on the call if they come down, and it's just, well, the first start is, I was one of those that said they should be downtown, because to me, that's where I see farmer's markets. But I just think right now, we might stop, want to look at somewhere else, I mean, granted, we don't have to move to, what, 2020, but to me, what's going to hurt to move and try for a year, and if it don't work, then come back, don't come back. That's not...
You know, I think the original charge, if I remember correctly, from the farmer's market location was to be in downtown Christiansburg. That was the original charge, and that's where we, that's where we moved now.
And that's just not from council, that came from the community, saying there should be more things downtown than bring us downtown, along with the building owners and things like that. This was before Food Truck Roadie, right? I believe so, or right about the same time.
At the same time.
But that was our primary reasoning for having it downtown.
But when people come downtown, and they had to come to the farmer's market, and then, basically, they leave. I mean, unfortunately, we all know there's nothing to do, per se, downtown, but to go to a couple of places to eat, other than that, we're starting to do, and things are, some things, most of the things are out of our control for us, building usage.
Well, I will tell you, it's not, I would never support it being in direction, because there's too many youth sports going on, and there's not enough parking as it is, even when you're up there in the summer.
And about the traffic coming in and out there during the market time.
Even though it's, I agree, it's probably one of the most visible places due to the intersection, but that is not the right place to have a farmer's market.
Can we talk to the, is it the New River Valley Health District that's a sponsor of that, and see how they feel about a location?
Well, I think, Casey, we have a farmer's market board of directors meeting once a month.
Yes, sir.
And it's scheduled for...
Second Wednesday of every month.
Second Wednesday of every month, so that will be in October tenth, maybe?
I believe it's going to be pulled into Central Business.
Yes. Can we make a couple more comments on this? I mean, there was talk about us buying property from the county at the old middle school, the town, you know, this is a secondary farmer's market, this is nothing that's going to be on weekends, and that's coming from the vendors. Hey, where do you go on Saturdays? If we open a market, are you going to come to Christiansburg? No, I'm going to Floyd, Salem, Blacksburg, and Runaway. So this is, you know, it is what it is, it's a secondary market that happens there in the week, and it is something that we are providing for our town and to bring somebody downtown. So really, it's going to depend going forward, and we're not going to settle this tonight. How much money are you folks willing to put in on this thing? That's what it's going to boil down to, and we're not talking about a couple thousand dollars and business sponsorships, because you're just not going to get that. It's going to take real taxpayer money, and we're talking six figures, easy, easy to get this thing. If you want it somewhere else, you have to obtain the property, and then you got to start marketing, and really send some money into this thing.
As soon as everybody knows where we're looking, the price goes up.
So I don't have a problem with the discussion, I'm just saying, there's a reason we put it down there. I think there's some debate over Hickock Street, whether it should be open or closed, which we could talk about later, but I think it's ideal for a secondary market that's only open there in the week. And I think Casey's doing a great job.
The activities and programs and sponsorship with it have all been good, it has brought people downtown to these events, and I think you've got, what, Halloween?
Yeah.
The final, the final mark of the month is...
The Fall Festival.
Fall Festival type thing, so, I mean, it is what it is, and I think we, you know, you can, the thing I hear from people, listen, I forgot, I forgot if it's Thursday. If you lead the horses to water, but if they don't drink any, that's just you can do, we've tried to advertise it, we could, maybe we can do some more signage, like, at one time, we had some farmer's market signs that we put out in certain locations, putting them there. But listen, is the farmer's market advertised on these wayfinder signs?
It is, it's, points people to Hickock Street, it's on about six signs, they have not been produced yet, but they are being produced in the next week, so if it's going to be moved, I mean, so, but yeah, they'll be on the wayfinding signs, and those will, their, the schedule is to dig the footers for those signs in October, and get them in the ground by November, so.
Casey, when is your farmer's market meeting?
If we continue the way we have, then the next one will be October ninth.
Okay.
Unless it gets rolled into Central Business.
Will you be discussing the location at that meeting?
Yeah.
I think, I would like to keep it on the front burner, and I think that's the perfect group to do it, to come back to us with some recommendations.
Well, and it's plenty of time between now and then for you to notify the vendors, if it may, was it local enough that they may want to come?
What time do you meet, Casey?
Five fifteen at the admin conference room.
Melissa, on the wayfinding signs, are they, I don't remember if they are sliding or if they're permanent.
They're not, so the panel would have to be replaced, I see, on the signs.
And that's very expensive, on that many signs.
Yeah, I don't have the exact cost of just the panel, but we wouldn't want to go into production with six panels, but direct people to Hickock if we're going to move it.
So if we only have a week, I'm not sure we can wait till Casey's meeting to make a decision then.
It's going to be something that's up in there for a while, I can hold those six signs. My only concern is, you know, it's a, it's a message schedule that works together with all the signs in the town, so if we move it somewhere else, it would affect other signs.
And this is more than, hey, that's a great location, it's, you know, Casey, this is going to be a huge task for Central Business and Casey, to reach out to almost every vendor that's at the Salem Farmer's Market, or every farmer in our area. If we had this here, would you come? Because, yeah, it could be a great location, very visible, but you still don't get the traffic unless we move to Saturday, and we can steal those vendors away from those other venues, which I don't think is going to happen myself. So it's more than just saying, this is, I can, we all can point out great areas, but there's more to this than just saying, this is great areas. Are we actually going to have the vendors, are we actually going to have the participation from our residents who are going to show up?
Casey...
That's a year-long stuff.
Are vendors so far pleased with the results this year?
So vendor sales have been quite steady, we're sitting at average or above, about eighty-five percent right now with our vendors, which is a pretty good number, especially when you compare it to the rest of the valley. So, you know, vendors, I think, have their opinions on location, and some will say there are certainly better locations, but in terms of vendor sales, as a bottom line for the market, we're doing, we're doing decent.
How many vendors do you have on average?
We...
Not, not the non-farmers, just...
Right. We, it's anywhere from ten to fifteen, that's a slight drop-off from last year, which was probably more fifteen to seventeen, we see more maybe twelve to thirteen this year. So there's been a slight drop-off, but nothing, nothing drastic.
Yeah, I think one of our most popular vendors had to stop coming due to health issues, that's the Red Lady, our former.
Okay.
And she was a huge drop.
Yeah, my wife, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, huge drop.
With most of these vendors too, it's not their sole job, and they try and, they're trying to juggle so many things, and sometimes it's the market that's dropped just because of family or other work, and so we kind of just have to juggle that as it comes.
And I wanted to be downtown, and I appreciate Mr. Bishop's commitment, because every time that I have been down there, you've been down there, so I appreciate your commitment, and also, you know, getting the feedback. So your opinion on this particular matter has a lot of weight with me. So I wanted to be downtown, but if there's something we can do to make it be more successful, I'm open for that too.
What about advertising? Casey looks to...
Yeah, I mean, those signs that Mayor Parker mentioned, they're still up at a lot of our recreation facilities around town that just have like the logo and say the date, the standing Thursday, make no difference, we have the banner over Main Street whenever there's not another event banner happening throughout the area.
Well, I knew that, I knew that years ago, Sarah had some just basically campaign signs, which would put out on probably Wednesday, but see...
I don't think those say...
We've only got maybe one or two of those left, we could reorder some of those, they're fairly cheap.
Yeah, and we promote each week on Facebook, usually sponsored.
Especially if somebody had to just put them out, because I would see them at the high school, I'd see it at the rec center, I'd see it all down Franklin and Runaway Street, you know, farmer's market, Hickock Street, Thursday, and it would have the hours, three to seven, so.
But I must, but part of the conversation for the farmer's market committee would be, what can we do better advertising for next year? You know, I'm sure Casey's going to think of fun things to do to try to get people down there, because that's what we were lacking when it really fell off, and right before Casey came on board. So he's done a great job with having, the key is you have to create an environment to bring people down there. And if the vendors aren't there, then there has to be some sort of activity for our residents.
Is it in our water bill most of the time?
It is, every water bill.
Every time it comes down?
It's in every water bill, it goes to about ninety-six-hundred.
Oh, that's huge.
I don't want to depend on that anymore, I've heard that for years and years and years, and I think we pay our water bill online, I don't know about you guys, but I don't think I've ever seen my wife open a water bill and show me the advertisement when we have to go. And I think it is, it does help us some, but we need to look at some other marketing tools.
Yeah.
And if we have to save money, do I really do that?
Bill to focus on people who maybe aren't online, don't have friends online, we get a lot of calls and feedback on the water bill, but it is a certain population that targets.
I think it's outstanding, yeah, I think people still like to handle things, and something that's in their hand, that many people, it's really cost will provide benefit.
I think it's great, but if you go to the Food Truck Roadie, Wilderness Trail Festival, one of the refreshing things that we see is young professionals with things, and the majority of those people are paying online.
Oh, I get it, it's a multi-pronged approach, I guess. I myself like to read the newspaper, thank you.
All right, are we okay for now?
Yeah, you got a big plate here.
I feel like we need to give Melissa direction though, with the sign company, because all of the discussions and meetings are going to occur after, she needs to give them a decision.
I think you could put those on hold for a short period of time, those panel sets.
The six that mentioned in the farmer's market? Or all of them, because my concern is if we move it, it will affect other signs where it currently doesn't direct people.
Well, I think, I think, you know, I'm not willing, it's not going to the rec center, and unless it's council, right here today, says we're willing to invest a half million dollars into a farmer's market, up to, okay, then, this is, this thing was developed for years and years, okay, and it's a secondary farmer's market, which was meant to bring people downtown, because that's what our citizens wanted, that's what they, when I went doing the tour, and you know this much, hey, you need something downtown to get people downtown, okay? That's why I came about.
I think that's the first thing you tasked me when I became mayor, was the farmer's market.
Probably, it is one of the many things.
It was, yes. And I've gotten one of you done so far.
I just, I think when we start putting, it's a domino effect, we start putting things on hold, and then council backs up and says, well, let's just leave it there because it's not costing us anything, and let's just let it go, and just, and then we've delayed our wayfinding signage, which we have sunk a lot of money into.
Casey, how many people show up to the farmer's market meeting?
So, not a lot. Typically, the representative of the New River Health District, which is Dr. Pam Ray, Randy, myself are usually, and sometimes a couple vendors, representation, but largely it is underattended, which I think sort of was how the idea possibly went into Central Business was conceived.
Is that something we could list in the public meetings? I don't know if that notification goes out or not.
Farmer's market meetings, it does.
I'm just wondering if we couldn't call a special meeting with Central Business and talk about nothing but that concern, because at the, well, tomorrow, we have to reschedule Central Business for scheduling conflicts anyway, so we're not having a meeting at the end of this month? So if Mr. Bishop's open to it, we could do that and address this faster, because Melissa needs us to.
Would you be able to, okay with the ninth meeting?
Well, I'm actually thinking sooner, because if not that many people show up to October ninth...
Well, I mean, that's, we call a meeting with Central Business at five fifteen in farmer's market type thing, or get an invitation after those.
Would that give you enough time? Because then we'd still probably have to bring it back here for a vote.
I think we need to tell Melissa to stop the presses for the signs, to be on the phone with them tonight or tomorrow morning to stop...
All of the signs, or those six signs?
Or is it just those six?
Well, she said they affect many more directional, so...
My concern is if we do move it, and it's not just those six, the new location, you know, there's signs throughout the town.
I'm not willing to do that, I think, I think it's a great location, if anything, you know, if we're going to move it, that's going to take a large number of funds, taxpayer funds to do that.
Can we get one of Steve's Las Vegas flashings signs and put that there outside?
But council needs to do that now, we need to, are we willing to do that? Stop the presses on the wayfinding? For a couple of months?
I mean, I'm, I'm not.
I like want to go up, you know, you get...
We've been doing this for a long time. If I were to have a vote in it, I would, I would not want to stop.
I want to hear from each, each member of council.
I don't want to stop, no. I'm not sure what your, your opinion is.
She asked to stop the signs if we're going to sit there and look at the relocation.
I want to make sure I understand what you're...
We have to direct her to call the company and say, stop everything.
I don't think we should do that, I think we should move ahead, is what I think.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah, I would agree with that.
So if we move ahead, then we keep the farmer's market where it is?
For now.
Or we list up the signs, so...
For now, but you can always redo the signs.
I mean, the signs have been, we've been talking about this for years.
Right, no, I absolutely agree, but if we make a decision, we're actually making two decisions at once.
That's right. Well, for the foreseeable future, it's going to remain there, and on the wayfinding signs go up, if we change our minds, then we'll have to make, want to change the signs.
We've changed a lot of segments.
And, but there's going to be a lot more money sunk in other than the changing of the signs. If we're moving the location, we have to probably purchase, we have to start thinking this is going to be a Saturday, not a weekday, okay? It's going to be significant funds put in this thing, so the signs are almost secondary if you redo those.
Does council have an opinion now about where to put it? No?
The farmer's market? Oh, that's, that's a big topic.
Mayor, real quick, as you know, we're undergoing the planning grant that we received money from Appalachian Regional Commission, and our, our public engagement has gone really well, and we're moving into the second phase, which is we're bringing on an architectural engineering firm, which is going to help us look at projects potentially for downtown Cambria and Midtown, that really gives us a hard look, and really, one of the intentions that Steph really hopes comes out of these, is looking at our farmer's market and really taking the next step from, from the local foods, local places design that you all may remember from about three years ago, when, when we had some, some of the original drawings, it's like, well, let's take another look at, let's look at Hickock, let's look at areas around there, where maybe, you know, the farmer's market could shift, maybe it goes to downtown park, you know, this is an opportunity for us to bring on a professional design, designer, you know, to really look at, you know, where is it possible downtown in Hickock, for the farmer's market, but also, but are there also places to gather? Because that's really what we heard from our public engagement, is people are really hungry for those places, that they can come and they can, and they can hang out and... that they can come and they can, and they, they can hang out and enjoy, you know, a sense of community. So, so I just wanted to add that, that we do have the ability over the next few months to, you know, with a professional designer, really look at, you know, if we were going to look at Hickok Street, how could it be laid out once we, once we go back there? Or is there other places that, that we could go in downtown or Cambria or Midtown as well, which, you know, includes other areas. So I wanted to add that.
And can I add one more thing? I, I think getting information from that, it is great, but that grant is so small, it's not going to allow us to move off of that money from that grant, but it's more money to do it.
Right. And what the, what the grant does allow us to do is, if, if it's council's pleasure, you know, that, you know, in, in January, there will be an Appalachian Regional Commission grant application that, for construction. And so what we have is a planning grant through them. And this is a new process that they've started to, to get communities to start to think about what are they, what would they want to really put their money in. So it hones in on a few projects. And so construction grants could be up to three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars from Appalachian Regional Commission. So we, we could, you know, so that is a potential option, you know, for, for a significant grant amount to, to look towards a, a permanent location potentially for a farmers market.
But you need to know that permanent location. I'm sure they're not just going to award us three hundred thousand dollars with, oh, we might put it over here.
Right. Absolutely not. I mean, we would have to have preliminary engineering for that, that particular location. And, and, you know, we did look at Hickok Street through local foods, local places. And, you know, at that time, there was, you know, they, they had looked at acquiring some land from, from the church. And that probably is not going to be a viable avenue for, for, you know, for the near future. So how would we work within the confines of Hickok Street? Is it feasible to put structures down there? Or, or on college? Or, or towards down, you know, downtown park or somewhere else in that area?
Do we want to sink a million dollars or half a million dollars into a secondary market? Right? Even if they give us, let's say, three hundred, we want to put two hundred thousand dollars into something that we get the same participation.
Well, I would, I'd like, I think we should move, respectfully, I think we should, I mean, make a decision on the signs and let's, you know.
That's what's, I think, it's on the table right now, but I'd like to listen to the last remaining members whether we want to tolerate it.
Would it be detrimental to us to remove the farmers market from our wayfinding signs and just use our standalone signs when we need them?
I think it's, I think that's part of your marketing campaign. When people see those and they see those at Farmers Market, is that the catalyst or that will get more people downtown and more people noticing? Other than, it doesn't look like a farmers market. It just looks like a street that's been closed off.
I don't think it's our draw. So that's why I was thinking, if we left it off of our signs right now, then we were open to temporarily moving it, permanently moving it without messing up Melissa's schedule.
I think if we remove them, we're going to mess up the schedule, period.
No, I could remove them pretty easily.
I don't want to remove them.
Neither.
I was in Lithgow just a few days ago and those signs, I can't wait to see them.
Yeah.
And we, we can change our mind whenever we want. And I'm not saying, but the, moving the farmers market is a big fat deal. And if we continue to delay these signs on every, these other decision making, and we spent, I think, you know, it's been a good discussion, we spent a lot of time on this. I'm fine with leaving the farmers market where it is. I'm fine with moving, I'm, I'm fine if we change our mind later, but I don't want to hostage the signs on this. Right? That's just my opinion.
And I will just quickly add to that, like I said earlier, the panels, you can just do the panels that, you know, the significant cost of the sign is the other parts of the structure, the pole, the design on the signs, et cetera. And so we know down the line, I mean, if the park happens, passenger rail happens, like there are going to be things that change in town. So we'll have to change panels of signs eventually. So that's just a note. Obviously, we don't want to change them if farmers market moves in a couple months.
What's the date for the signs to get put up?
Sorry?
What's the date for the signs to get put up?
Um, they're going to start footers in early October. So then, once they do footer holes and things will move quickly, they want to do it before weather, you know, before we get better.
Thank you.
But just to mention, replacing panels is expensive. I mean, it could be tens of thousands of dollars.
Right, yeah. Depending on how many you're placing. Obviously, it's a cost and we want to avoid that.
But if we move the market, it's just not going to be, we're moving it to this street that looks just like the one we had.
Oh, no, I absolutely agree.
It's going to take some serious funds.
Whatever decision we come up with.
Which would include that.
The thought process of, well, we could just change it later, comes with a very high price tag. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
I think when you're talking tens of thousands of dollars, and every dollar's important, especially as council around budget time. I think changing those is not even going to scratch the surface of purchasing property.
Oh, I agree.
Engineering, creating structures. And then not only that is, if, and that takes council wanting to sink five hundred thousand dollars in it. I mean, I, I'd say we go, this is going to be a, a long drawn out process for council in the next two years. Casey, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, I will add, the one thing that, you know, this season that we haven't had to combat in years past, which I know it was a necessity of course, was that construction. That construction on the back of the street, I think, can't quantify that, but that definitely had a negative impact, although of course, well, well needed. So that, that's just isolated to this season. That is not an ongoing issue as well, but.
Since we know this one. I like the fact, I like the location of the farmers market. And I don't think we should proceed with finding anything else at this point. I think we need to go ahead with the signs and leave the market where it is and do maybe come up with some better marketing ideas, even if it's for the campaign type signs that could be put out, we put out on Tuesdays. Because we did that some in the past. We do have a couple of those signs that we, you know, they're not hard. And that's, that's a, a cheap advertisement. And I do remember, I do have people telling me that I did see that sign, or I did see the flashing sign. So I, I think that, you know, it's been, it's been an off year as far as the construction goes and the noise goes. But I think all in all, the foot traffic is, has been good. I haven't seen any vet farm vendors walk away with their frowning. So, okay. Can we move on? Are we good? We're good?
Yes.
All right, so.
Well, did we decide? We're not, we didn't decide on the sign.
We're going to proceed with the signs.
We're proceeding with the signs.
Okay. The next is the addition of the fire truck request by Chief Hanks. And who's presenting that? They've been, are you done or Val done it?
I'm going to defer to you. I'm going to defer to you.
Billy Hanks, come on down.
Council approved in this year's budget the replacement of our 1988 ladder truck that was originally, it's originally set up on a twenty-year replacement. We purchased the truck in 1988. The truck's thirty-one years old now. About seven years ago, eight years ago, we purchased a smaller ladder truck for maneuverability to get, be able to get in around Oak Tree and tighter areas. At that time, Mr. Helms was the manager then and we talked about how much longer we could make that eighty-eight truck last. I told him at that time, seven years. So we've exceeded the seven years that we're, but we're, we're replacing a thirty-one-year-old ladder truck. Council graciously approved a budget of one point five million dollars to replace this ladder truck. For the past twelve months, the volunteer guys with the fire department have worked on a committee of twelve people to sit down and design a truck that we feel like will meet the needs of the town for the next twenty, twenty-five years. They've worked very diligently to build this truck, taking into consideration everywhere this truck needs to go, all the new development, particularly around Oak Tree, over at Adams, the Villas, places like that are really tight to get large trucks into. We sit down and we've been working with the company out of, it's based out of the Nassau's, Virginia, but they're based, their service center is based in Roanoke, Atlantic Emergency Solutions. They have, they're on the Houston-Gallston contract, which means we have a court of, an agreement with Houston-Gallston where we can purchase this truck off of this contract. After the committee sit down and work through their specs and built the truck that they felt like they needed, the price came in over one-five. For the past seven days, I've been working with the company to try to get that price reduced, to see what we can make, changes we can make on the truck to get the price reduced and get it within our budget. At this time, we have a budget, at this time, we have a contract that if council approves a purchase order on it for one million, four ninety-six, six thirty-five. The kicker on this thing is, is that President Trump is proposing new tariffs on the steel industry that go into effect, could go into effect October the first, which if they do go into effect October the first, this could raise the price of this truck in the upper two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars plus. So we're trying to beat the tariff deadline. We, the minute, fire department worked diligently to, to get the truck in, into budget range. We are in budget range at one-four ninety-six, six thirty-five. We feel this truck will serve the town of Christiansburg for at least twenty-five years, if not longer. Fire trucks are not cheap. The eighty-eight model truck that, that we have right now, every time we have the truck serviced, we have to have parts made for it. We've spent, since two thousand and sixteen, I think I've spent over fifty-one thousand dollars in repairs on this truck in three years, trying to keep this truck in service and keep it going. The other kicker is, there's not a great demand for a thirty-one-year-old fire truck, easy to say. Now, we can sell the truck after we get the new truck in, but we're not going to get a great deal of money for this truck. A similar truck on Gov. Deals about nine months ago, that had been totally restored, including the hydraulics and everything on the truck, only sold for seventy thousand dollars. When we purchased this truck in nineteen eighty-eight, it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was greater than we paid for the fire station in nineteen seventy-six at two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So trucks, trucks are going to continue to rise in cost. We have a budget of one-five. We're under the one-five budget. There are options available to us to do pre-pays, which we could get more discounting off of that price, which if we are able to do that, and Val and I have discussed that a couple of different times, we're not exactly sure what those dollar figures will be, but it should reduce this price some more. That would also help us buy the equipment to go on this truck, to stock this truck with new equipment. We wouldn't have to use some of the stuff off the eighty-eight truck. We can use some of the stuff we can't. But we're here requesting tonight that council approve the town manager to sign the contract for, to buy the truck through the Houston-Gallston contract with Atlantic Emergency Solutions for one million, four ninety-six, six thirty-five. Any questions?
And this money is in the budget, correct?
One-five in the budget.
I do have a question, Mr. Bishop. Sorry, I forgot my last word. It says unpublished options at three point five-six percent. And then the discount is very similar to the same amount of money, but it just says chassis prepayment.
That, that discount on that chassis prepayment was a discount that Atlantic gave us to get the price under one-five.
So that's just them working with us?
That's them working the numbers to get us under one-five. That's not a prepayment that we have to pay at the fifty-one thousand. We don't have to pay that payment. That was their discount to us to get us under one-five.
You don't know how much these things are important to the town until your house is on fire. And my house was on fire and they saved my house. And I think they deserve whatever they need.
It would be nice to know what the discount would be for a hundred percent prepayment.
A hundred percent prepayment?
I mean, if it's considerable, because that's an option down here.
It, it is. And I can, I can get that figure.
Well, it was four and a half percent?
Four and a half percent.
I would oppose paying that much upfront. You're putting an awful lot of risk out there without any product out there. They do have some options to prepay at certain stages. And so based on where our reliability and trust factors are and, and how much it is, we would take advantage of those as they come up. So that would be throughout the term. And just as information, fifteen-month build?
Fifteen-month build.
So the money's allocated in this year's budget. It will have to roll in next year's budget unless we do some of those pre-pays. But it won't be done by the end of this fiscal year.
Correct. And, and even though the company's bonded, you know, and, and you would think that prepaid, the whole hundred percent prepaid would be the way to go. Even though they're bonded and this is a reputable company, I would not agree to do that or would not suggest we do that. But I would suggest that we look at the prepaid options when the chassis is built. We have done this before. We did this with another town purchase that we did in two thousand. So if we prepay the chassis, when the chassis is complete, four and a half percent. If we prepay it, prepaying, four and a half percent. I think we can take advantage of every discount that we could, could receive and then pay it a little bit at a time and not chunk out the full amount at one time because it's a fifteen-month build.
Sure. No, I understand. I was just trying to think if the discount for purchasing was more than what we would get by keeping it in the bank.
Right.
But, yeah, I see the chunks of it. That makes sense.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate Chief Hanks' year and Val's savvy approach to fiscal part of it. I depend on that. So you need a motion on this?
Yes, we do.
I make a motion that we approve our town manager's purchase of the ladder truck.
Correct.
Motion, we have second.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. A motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hefford.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilman Schalter.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye.
Six, seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if I could just have one minute, I'd like to thank all the members of council and, and staff that reached out to us with the pass and one of our firefighters a couple of weeks ago. It really meant a lot for you guys to reach out to us and, and tell us that you're thinking about it. That being said, we were doing a fundraiser for the American Suicide Prevention Foundation. We're going to be participating in a walk in memory of Brian Horn at Roanoke College on October the fifth. If you, if you so wish to make a donation to that foundation in Brian's name, we would appreciate it.
Can you send us some information on that?
I will.
Can I ask one question a little bit while, eventually you're going to have an annex filled, right?
Second station?
Yes.
I hope so.
Now, my question is, you're going to have to have trucks to fill that annex.
We started, that was the reasoning behind the purchase of the truck in ten, two thousand and ten, is that truck was going to go to the station on Roanoke Street.
Okay.
That's why we were able to buy that truck as a demo truck. It fit the needs of what we wanted to do. That truck was intended to be in the station on Roanoke Street. We're still not there yet. We're hoping that we can come up with a plan to be there soon. We are busting at the seams in the building on Depot Street. We can't take any more people, can't take any more membership because we don't have room for any more membership. So to be able to grow the fire department, be able to grow the services, we need to really start thinking about how we're going to do that station on Roanoke Street.
I mean, the reason I asked that question was, this eighty-eight truck, would that suffice to go, go into your second station?
I want that truck to go out of here.
Yeah.
We're spending too much money on that.
He said you're going to look on it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to sell that truck as soon as the new one comes in and put that truck on Gov. Deals and hope we can get, no, shoot me, hopefully get twenty-five thousand dollars out of it because we're just not, I watch Gov. Deals pretty regularly to see what these trucks sell for. A thirty-one-year-old fire truck is not going to sell for a lot of money. Probably be better off to sell it for scrap.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do what you can.
Yeah. Staff reports, town manager?
Just to point out that we canceled the October eighth meeting and in that regard... Just want to point out that we canceled the factory break meeting, and in that regard, let's just point out that the December twenty-fourth council meeting would be Christmas Eve. I assume you don't want to meet that night?
No.
We should.
We should.
You need a motion?
Also, I guess I'll-
Can you start the budget now, you're talking about the-
November twenty-sixth meeting would be the same week as Thanksgiving. If you care to meet that night, can we move?
We moved that up in the past.
We have, we have moved it up in the past, we have canceled it in the past.
Can you look at your schedule and public hearings, and if we need to move it up, I don't have a problem with it up.
I'd almost prefer to move it up, if we can, because, you know, we're going to miss, well, no, we're going to miss one meeting in October, and one meeting in December, so I would like to see-
What are you packing on?
I agree with what you're saying, Mike.
Thank you.
November nineteenth?
So it would put us back-to-back meetings, but that's okay.
It would.
So that, that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion to move the November twenty-sixth meeting to November the nineteenth, and to cancel the December twenty-fourth meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilman Schalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Six, seven, thank you. Anything else, Randy?
It's all I have.
Okay. Town Attorney?
No report.
Any other staff? Council reports, Ms. Sacks.
Yes, I have a few things to throw in. Central business tomorrow is canceled due to scheduling conflicts, I just wanted to mention this before, make sure that's clear. And I did want to wish Mr. Hubbard happy birthday, if he's okay saying his age.
Yes.
Are you?
Yes.
Okay, he just turned seventy-five, had a birthday last week, so I wanted to mention that. And also, there's been a little bit of discussion about CBS doing a drone interview, and when they did it, they really made fun of Christiansburg. And, you know, that was a little disappointing, so I was wondering if council agrees, and Randy, to maybe get Melissa to do a little bit of PR?
If, can I, can I, oh, we don't have, can I segue into that?
Sure.
I spoke with the drone people this past weekend, and they were aware of it, and I was under the understanding that they have, that they are preparing something to reach out to the, to the networks. They are also talking about November the twenty-eighth, I think they're having a demonstration at the Moose Lodge.
That's this Saturday, sir.
It is this Saturday.
September.
That's what, yeah, twenty-eighth.
Please don't lose it.
I'm going to be saying, I swear to God, I know what I'm saying, anyway. Anyway, so, so this coming Saturday at the Moose Lodge, and they're going to, three to-
Ten to five.
Two to five, and I would encourage all of you to be able to attend that, just to see them, and actually, they're going to deliver stuff to us, and that'll be a good chance to talk to the people. I will be out of town, we have a staff member that we all know love getting married, Mr. Jenkins, so Earl and I are going up to his wedding Saturday in Leesburg, but I have expressed my condolences, that my son is- I'm talking about the Wings people, though. I have told the Wings people I couldn't offer ten, is that I do quite a good turnout from the bottom.
So are you doing the, are you performing the ceremony?
No, no.
He's on my hook.
Okay.
Well, and as much as I appreciate the Wings people standing up, I feel like Christiansburg needs to stand up. I mean, we're proud of where we're at, we just revoked its second-best place to live, and, you know, we're being picked on, on national news. I think we need to take a stand on this, support ourselves.
I think all the major networks-
Yeah.
-had no idea why this happened, so-
Well, we need to tell them why.
Yeah, we need to tell them why.
So, Melissa, do you want to get on to that?
I'll work on it.
Okay.
Well, and just, you know, my vision is, maybe get with Lisa, even, with tourism, come together with a little package, and say, you know, hey, here's some stuff you can have on.
I also might add, Melissa's husband Jacob just went to work for Wings, so I think we have any in there, too.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I got, you know, some backup on that, because I'd like to be proud of our small town. And that is all that I had, thank you.
Mr. Hubbard?
Well, now, I have a little bit quicker thing on the Wings thing. It's going to be on Saturday, it's going to be from two to five, and it's going to be at the Moose Lodge, and everybody's invited to come to watch the performance of how it will work. But I have two other little things, so, I wanted to mention the skateboard, the competition that they had last Friday night, and they had thirty-two skateboarders who were skating in three different divisions, and they had over a hundred people turn out to it. I think the Aquatic Center, which is the one who provided it, was very satisfied with what went on. And also talking about something this Saturday, there's going to be a free swim clinic at the Aquatic Center, put on by the Virginia Tech Swimmers, and that's going to go from ten fifteen to twelve thirty, and anybody between the ages of eight and eighteen can go attend. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Stipes?
No report.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Schalter?
No report.
Mr. Bishop?
No report.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. Christiansburg has again, proven that when you close Main Street downtown, the great things happen, and it's happened for the last month, and I just think it's a good thing for us to close the streets, I think we ought to do it much more often, and we do.
The feedback that I've gotten, not only as a mayor, but as a member of Kiwanis Club, it's probably one of the best ones we've ever had.
Yeah, it was great.
And I think the plans from the Kiwanis Club next year is to leave the food trucks where they were on Franklin Street, and add a few more to them, but they, the last vote, twenty-eight and ten thousand during the day, the streets were packed all day long.
Yeah.
Mr. Collins?
That's all.
Okay, well, I wish I could be quick, however. I have given each of you the, a copy of the VML agenda, and VML conference starts Saturday, Sunday, the sixth, at Roanoke, at Hotel Roanoke. The only change that I noted on it was that the, the, what used to be the closing awards dinner is now a luncheon on Tuesday from twelve to two. The Host City Night is again on the, then on the city market, with all of the local food vendors and restaurants providing food for us. That's a great, it's a great event, kind of, if. If, we have registered all of the council members at about two hundred and fifty dollars apiece, so if for some reason, in the next few days, you decide you're not going to come at all, and we need to cancel, but, you know, it's, it's still a good event, they have a lot of evening, some evening stuff going on, too, but I'll just throw that out to you.
Can I ask a question? I know that we and Blacksburg together are going to make a presentation, just, what day is that going to be?
Just us?
Sunday.
It's on Sunday, Sunday at two.
I think the registration desk's open ten o'clock. The second thing is, I sent you all a flag policy that I worked on with Andrew's help, and it seems to be fairly inclusive, I've gotten responses from three or four of you, do you think this is a type of policy that we would like to pursue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
An update, we're trying to figure out how to get the pole out of the ground at the high school. Jim, are you working on that?
Yes, sir.
Is it going to come out?
I hope so, I'm trying to get the pole up. Mr. Sut.
The sleeve come out of, it'll come out of the sleeve, I think.
Good.
Okay, so we'll move forward with that. And also, in our consent agenda, we did approve the, yeah, we did, okay, that's good, copy of that is in your file. The other thing that I sent out today is from a young man by the name of Hayden Cowell, who is an Eagle Scout candidate, two one forty-five, and he, he came to me several weeks ago and asked, you know, what type of projects that we have, and I talked about the flag pole, and his counselors didn't think that was a good idea, but he really honed in on possibilities of the signage for the five branches of the, of the service down Memorial Square, which we do own that square, and I think he's going to talk with them about it, and we're going to get, he will have to present artist conceptions to us, and a, and a view of what, and he'll have to work with the archipark bed and various places that he could get. He doesn't have to build everything, he just has to oversee the job and keep getting it in. We suggested things, if he does put a certain type of sign up there, is to maybe landscape around it, so that it sets it aside from just being a pole stuck in the ground. So I will, if it's all right with you all, I'll continue to work with him, and when we have more concrete plans and ideas, then I'll bring them back for discussion.
Sounds good.
Okay, I would also like to-
Take that through the county, right?
No, we own, we own that square.
Okay.
We own, we don't own the, the part of the square in front of the nine-one-one building, but we own the other three sections.
Just wanted to make sure, it's such an honorable thing, I didn't want to see unless the conditions.
Yeah, if they don't like, Sam blessed signs, I don't know. I would like to recognize Sherri Blevins tonight for joining us, candidate supervisor of District B, and Joanna Jenkins, back there in the back?
Hicks.
Hicks.
Hicks, Hicks, right. There's another Joanna Jenkins I see, oh, Joanna Hicks, I'm sorry, but she is a candidate for town council for November fifth election. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any other business to come before council?